Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Maytown Meeting. I'm Mike Rambros. Happy to see your faces this morning. We're going to welcome, before we get started, a few new residents. Mrs. Susan Danforth, who's in apartment 422. Dr. Teresa Husar, who's in apartment, she was in apartment 2513, but is now in 2204. Mr. Henry Morris, in apartment 110. And Mr. and Mrs. Joseph and Constance La Palambara, who are in apartment 2413. They're moving in today. So we've got quite a few new faces to welcome and to make friends with. So Maria, I'm going to ask Maria La Sala, our spiritual care coordinator, to come on up and welcome us.
Thank you, guys. Good morning, friends. I'm Maria La Sala, the spiritual care coordinator, and I'm always delighted to be with you at these town meetings. In 1965, Hal David and Bert Bakarach wrote a song that became an anthem for the time. "What the World Needs Now Is Love" flew to the top of the charts as Dionne Warwick's voice filled the airways. How many of you remember that song? Let's sing it. What the world needs now is love, sweet love. It's the only thing that there's just too little of. What the world needs now is love, sweet love. No, not just for some, but for everyone. When that song was written, the world, the world was in a very difficult time. War was raging in Vietnam. Civil rights and women's rights brought marchers to the streets. Martin Luther King offered his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. It was a time of political division, and the people were afraid and uncertain. It seemed, then, that the only response that made sense was to talk, well, to sing of love. It seems silly to imagine that love could make a difference in how we would speak to one another, find ways to reconcile difference, and work together to bring peace. It was hard work. And, well, change happened, and lives were made a little bit better. That was then. And, well, this is now. And you know as well as I do that it feels as if the world is in the midst of chaos. There is war raging in Ukraine. Political divisions, civil rights, and women's rights are again on the front pages of our newspapers. Gun violence is at an all-time high, with three mass shootings in as many weeks, and one just two days ago at a school where 19 children and two teachers were killed. What are a weary people to do? Is it time for us to sing love's anthem again? What the world needs now is love? And if we did, what would that love look like? I want to share some good news of love in action. You might recall that one of our team members, Caitlin Willett, was hurt in a car accident about three months ago. Caitlin returned to work on Monday. She had amazing medical care, and she worked really hard. We might say that love got her through. I also have some sad news to share, and this too speaks of the way love can transform a life. Some of you know that Whitney Center liaison, Mary Martino's husband, Anthony, was diagnosed with a rapidly progressing cancer last year. Anthony passed away yesterday with Mary at his side. Mary met Anthony when she was 15 years old. It was love at first sight, and that love held them for all these years. I ask that you hold Mary and her children and grandchild in your thoughts and prayers today and in these days to come. We will be sure to post information about Anthony's funeral as soon as we receive it. And Whitney Center also said goodbye to Frank Blackford, who died yesterday. Let's pause for a moment to give thanks, to give thanks for Caitlin's recovery and for the lives of Anthony Martino and Frank Blackford. As I close my remarks this morning, I'd like to share the poem "Don't Hesitate," by Mary If you suddenly and unexpectedly feel joy, don't hesitate. Give into it. There are plenty of lives and whole towns destroyed or are about to be. We are not wise and not very often kind, and much can never be redeemed. But still, life has some possibility left. Perhaps this is life's way of fighting back, that sometimes something happens better than all the riches or power in the world. It could be anything, but very likely, you notice it in the instant when love begins. Anyway, that's often the case. Anyway, whatever it is, don't be afraid of its plenty. Joy is not made to be a crumb. My friends, what the world needs now is love. It will be my hope that we will let love shine over and over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. We normally save some time on the agenda for a report from the residents council. We do not have a report this month, okay? So we're going to move on, and I'm going to ask Terry Rio, our director of philanthropy, to come on up and give a report.
Good morning, everyone. I have some good news, and in a way, definitely, this is sharing some love, and thanks to you and to the management team and to other donors to the Whitney Center Philanthropy Council Staff Development Fund. Last week, the grant selection committee met and reviewed applications from our team members applying for grants. They were able to apply for up to $2,500 for whatever pursuit they wanted to pursue, what would make a difference to them in their lives, whether it's academics, or whether it's a passion, a new hobby, just something of learning. So 13 team members have been awarded grants. They work in departments across the campus, in the health center, resident services, housekeeping, dining services, employee services, the business office, and many are CNAs, either in assisted living or personal options. The total grant amount this year is over $23,000. And the team members who received grants are Stephanie Hyken, Kaylee Williamson, Yolanda Yancy, Tillian Taylor, Lakeisha Saunders, John Paul Torres, Felicia Green, Patricia Soltes, Shanil Miller, Natalie Ayamang, Joyce Sharat, Kishana Sullins, and Tyrone Reese. So when you see them, please congratulate them. We'll be getting more word out, more communications, but their managers, supervisors did tell them of the good news the end of last week. And it's interesting to know what they are studying or pursuing. Emergency medical technician course at Yale New Haven Hospital, certification as a dementia skills training consultant, which is a further level than, you know, we had started a program here, but this is even going a step further. Yoga classes, fitness classes for health, painting classes at the Creative Arts Workshop, instrumental music at the Neighborhood Music School, driver's education. And academic studies include information systems management, which is computers, computer science, whether it's a degree program or certification to get a certain level of recognition, accounting finance degree studies, and certification training for a loan-signing notary agent. So again, thank you. If you are interested in contributing to the fund at all during the year, please come and see me, whether it's a planned gift or answering appeal or gifts throughout the year. So thank you. And are there any questions on the program? Okay, thank you.
You know, we've talked about in past months here recently about the workforce challenges that we and really the rest of the world is experiencing, particularly in the clinical areas, registered nurses, certified nurses aides, those kinds of positions. And one of the things that we need to continue to focus on is something that I think we already do well, and that's exemplified by what Terry just reported, and that is to take an interest in the lives of our team members beyond their work here and to engage them in that way so that we create a relationship that engenders their connection and belonging and contribution to our community in a way that transcends the typical employer-employee relationship. And I think that's a great example of our contribution to people, to their growth, right, beyond where they are in terms of their job descriptions here. And I think it's a differentiator. I think it sets us up to continue to attract good people who want to give of themselves to something greater. And so I want to thank Terry for her work and thank you residents for all of your generosity and your spirit, you know, in giving toward our, toward our team members. I really appreciate that. Along those lines, we have set up, I mentioned this last, last time around, I think, a couple of key goals and objectives for this year. One of those being our team member experience, specifically to take a look at how we're recruiting and selecting new team members and how we're retaining and what all the things we're doing to keep the good people that choose to come work here. So that, that is obviously, I think it's obvious, directly related to our residents and our Thrive at Home members' satisfaction and overall quality of experience. This engagement, this connection, this belonging and contribution that we can draw from our team members needs to be top of mind for all of us as we navigate the turbulence of the workforce issues. And so we, we are aiming to create even, an even better environment of engagement and psychological safety for all the people who choose to engage with us. And so to that end, we recognize that it's our own, beginning with me, all the way through to our directors, our line supervisors. It is our skills in leadership, management, and coaching that will help to foster that environment. And so we are making significant investments in these areas so that we can improve our position with respect to retention and continue to attract really good people to do the work that we have to do here at Whitney Center. So along those lines, I'm going to ask Karen Lushings to come up. Karen is our vice president for employee services. Come on up to give a report, and Karen's going to be doing this every month, to just give you a little highlight on how we're doing in terms of recruitment and retention, but also to talk about some of the, the specific initiatives that we're taking to improve our capacity to create the kind of workplace that we, we all envision. Karen?
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Karen Lushings. I am the vice president of employee services. So as Mike just shared with you, we are focusing this year really on those two objectives of technology and team member experience. And while primarily we used to focus solely on our recruiting efforts and who we're bringing in, the focus on how we retain people, how we can improve the lives of our team members, how we can support everyone, to better support each of you, is really a shift and a larger focus for us. We've always been focused on supporting our team members, and I think we're really just heightening that and saying, how can we do it better? We've done a great job to date, and we want to improve. As we strive for excellence as a community and an organization, we want to strive to do that for our team members as well. So while recruiting will still remain top priorities and things that we look at, I will share for everybody that we currently do have eight full-time positions that we are recruiting for actively. We welcomed 10 new team members to the organization in the month of May, and we're currently working with five new candidates to join us at the beginning of June. And we're really excited about their journey here and them coming to join this team, especially at this time when we're going to be focused on what we can do to enhance their experience so that they want to be a part of this community, feel connected to it, to provide all of you with better services and better supports. And the work that we're doing with our leadership team, helping them to grow and develop, but really so that they can help to grow and develop their team members, so that we can all come together as a community. And I'm really excited about this journey for our entire organization, for this team, and to be able to support everybody as we go through that. And looking at how we can build our leadership skills, our management skills, and introducing a new skill about coaching, and how those three things can help all of us to build and to grow and create a community where we are all connected to one another, where we feel like we belong and we want to contribute to something much larger than just ourselves individually. So I'm looking forward to being able to share this journey with each of you every month. I'm available anytime, so please come and knock on my door and ask questions. But hopefully, it is our vision that we will see something absolutely incredible come from this, and I'm excited and looking forward to that journey for everybody. And that's it. Any questions? All right, well, thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
Just one question, and I'm, I'm not sure if I should be addressing you or Thomas, but we've noticed, how would I call it, rollbacks in the dining services, which I've been assuming or guessing that it's because of lack of staff. Are some of those eight new hires in the dining services, or the five new ones that you say we hope to add in June, in the dining services, and can we see a return of, you know, the dining services being at full strength soon?
So I am going to defer to Thomas, so I know when he comes up, I'm sure he is going to address those things. But what I can share from a recruiting perspective is yes, we are actively recruiting for those positions that are open in dining. Like everyone else sort of across the country, we are not immune to the workforce issues that are out there. And while we are recruiting and we are still bringing people into the organization, it is slower than it used to be historically. So it's taking us a little longer to find the right people to come, and that is something that we really do focus on. It's finding the right people, people who can enhance our community, who want to be a part of something that's bigger than themselves. We can bring people in. We want to make sure we're bringing in the right people. So we appreciate everybody's patience as we do that, because ultimately what we're trying to do is find the right people who can serve you and enhance this community to be better and continue to be great place that we are. Thank you.
Great, Karen, thanks. You know, one of the things that we started the last couple of days, we had, and I announced this, I think, last month, we had all of our management team, supervisors, managers, directors, vice presidents gather for the last two days at a workshop to, to focus on understanding and start, and building our leadership, management, and coaching skills. And that's the kickoff for a month's long journey of this kind of education and development that will then catapult us into the future that Karen is describing. So our next major initiative for the year, our second major initiative for the year is technology. And a lot of this stuff is happening behind the scenes, but it prepares us to do more things that are, that are customer-facing for residents and for our Thrive at Home members and for our team members. And so I'm going to ask Rafael to come up and give a brief report on that.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to start off by announcing that Connor Hunt, who you all may know from your security department, has been selected to join our IT team. And Connor, why don't you, if you don't know what he looks like, Connor, come out and let everybody take a look at you. Initiation. So we are, we are really excited for Connor, and we're really happy to have him. So thank you.
Thanks, Connor.
Thank you. No pressure, no pressure, buddy. We had, we had him set up all the mics for this morning, so he passed the test.
Did he cut his hair for this?
Yeah, he cut his hair just for this, by the way. Let's see, last month, we announced that we were looking to partner with an organization called WHILL. And this is an organization that develops, manufactures autonomous vehicles, right, self-driving vehicles, and we had hoped that their, their solution, their application, might help us with some of our internal transportation challenges. And we very much look forward to forming a partnership with them. But where we are today is we're trying to negotiate the terms of the trial, if you can believe that. We have very specific needs that we would love for this application, this system to solve for. And at the same time, they have financial requirements just for us to trial the system. It's going to cost us money. So we're trying to talk through that and come to an agreement so that we could see the system. So that's where we are. We'll continue those conversations, and hopefully we can come to an agreement, get those things out here, and get them tested and see, see how well they work. We, we announced also that we are looking to implement a, a new technology, a new system from an organization called K4 Community. And we believe that this is going to be one of the primary sort of vehicles, platforms that we're going to use to give you information, community information, what's going on, menus, programming, you name it. A few components to that system, we have a resident app, we have digital signage, and sort of an enhanced, expanded Channel 102, right, potentially actually looking to add an additional channel, Channel 101. Where we are today is we, we're looking to sort of pulse out the implementation of these things. We don't want to just do everything at one time, but we have some, some delays unfortunately with supply chain. So the, for the digital signage in particular, and that's the screens, the TV screens that you see by the north and the south desk, there's one sort of on Main Street by the library, we're looking to reposition those and install much larger screens, 75-inch screens. So there's some construction that we need to perform to get those up, and some of the parts that we need for construction, right, we need access to these things from the back, we need panels, they're just all delayed. So we expect that construction will begin on June 4th for that system. And much bigger screens, in fact, the, the four locations initially will be the south, south desk area, the north desk sort of living room area, one near the bistro, and the last one right, right in between these double doors here in the cultural arts. So as that begins to gain more traction in all levels of that, that deployment, we don't want to do it alone, right? This is something for you, so we'll invite some of you to kind of give us your perspective and how we might deploy that, or how it might look and feel a little differently. And lastly, we announced last month that we were looking to expand our surveillance camera system, right? We just received another version of our, of the proposal last week. We're going to be reviewing that today, as a matter of fact, with the vendor, just to make sure that everything being proposed is going to meet our needs. It looks good, so I expect that over the next couple of weeks, barring no supply chain delays, which, which is always a concern, well, you'll start seeing some, some movement activity on additional cameras on the exterior part of the campus, and we'll get that moving as well. A few of the things, like Mike mentioned, that happens behind the scenes, our cost accounting system, we mentioned we're upgrading, that is going as planned. We expect to go live with the new system June 1. And our, pardon me, our electronic medical records system, we're upgrading that, partnered with a new vendor. That, much broader project, and we expect in October, go live with, with that system. That's, that pretty much covers it for today. Would anybody have any questions for me? Yep, let's just get a mic in your hand. Thank you.
Instead of getting a automatic electrified vehicle that will take people where they need to go, I noticed a number of people have their own electrified vehicles, and that gets, apparently gets them to where they need to go. I wonder if the solution for the problem would be to have those who need an electrified vehicle to purchase one, depending upon what they cost, I have no idea what they cost, and maybe Whitney Center could help buy some or help contribute to the cost instead of having a electrified vehicle that we don't know and don't trust and is not being used anywhere else in the country for this purpose. And finally, if we do get a vehicle that's similar to what we had before, which requires a driver, where are we going to get the drivers, and will they be available at the appropriate
So I'll start off by saying that the, the vehicles that we're looking at are being used in this country, in fact, in several airports in the country. They have not been trialed in They have not been trialed in an organization like ours. That'll be new for them. Secondly, I guess it's really up to the individual to decide whether they want a motorized scooter or not, right? We can't make that decision for people. And I suppose that there might be some challenges with that, right? Where do you park, where do you park 20 scooters at Center Stage, right? There's things that we have to think about as well. Whereas an autonomous vehicle will drop off and go back home, right? So there's that. In terms of the trolley and the staffing, that's maybe something. I know Ken has talked about that in the past. And I don't think that's something that we are going to go back to. You heard Karen and Mike mention the staffing issues that everyone is experiencing. And finding someone to man a trolley full-time is a significant challenge. So. Yes, let's just get a mic in your hand, if you don't mind.
Commenting on the same issue. It seems to me that bringing a self-driving vehicle into this environment is a mistake, particularly if it's going to cost us money for demonstration. I can think of no expert system, I know a little bit about it, that can navigate this facility here. I don't care who they are, who are designing these things. When we have two or three people, like myself can barely walk or walk not walk well, navigating Broad Street, you're bound to have an accident. So I think the fact that we're spending money for this, to me, is deplorable. So I think the whole business is not valid at all.
Yeah. And thank you. I appreciate your perspective. I do. We haven't spent any money yet, right? And that's what we're trying to negotiate, right? We don't typically cover development costs or cost to, for someone to demonstrate a system for us. That's not typical. And that's what we're trying to negotiate. Maybe it's different for this organization who happens to be from another country. Maybe that's how they do things. So we're talking through that and I get it. We don't know if it's going to work. It might not. It might work wonderfully. And it's technology. And I'm a little bit biased. I'm the technology guy, right? So I do want to see it work, but we need to give it an opportunity. It might just solve our challenges. It just might. And that's my job, right? I need to solve challenges and I do it through technology. So I would ask that you just give it a chance. And we're not going to do this alone and we're certainly going to invite you. And if it just doesn't work out and if there are concerns, we'll all talk about it. We're not just going to put something in here just to put something in here, right? It's your home. We want it to work. So, but thank you and we'll do this together. Any other questions? Thank you.
So I'm Peggy Joyce, Vice President of Clinical Services. It's my turn to give you my report. I know you're all waiting with bated breath to hear about COVID. I have heard from many of you of concerns because as we remember, the past two and a half years, we've been pretty much without much COVID in the community. We've done extremely well. But I want to put it in perspective. Yes, we have had a few more cases than normal, which has heightened everybody's concern and alarm because these are your neighbors and people you might have dined with. So everybody is much more aware. But I just want to let you know, looking at the whole issue prospectively, we are still doing a tremendous job. I don't, I'm not sugarcoating it because one case for me is too many. So anyone that gets COVID, I understand your concerns. But keeping 200-plus people living in a community setting is not an easy feat. So currently, we have three residents that are under quarantine. Excuse me, meaning that they have positive COVID. That's what the current number is. We've never really gone above four at any given time. So if you look at that, you know, percentage-wise, we're still at a very, very low percentage. I think that's like under 2% of our entire community. So we are doing a fabulous job. In Connecticut, I think most of you follow the positivity rate, which right now is, as of this morning, was 12.5. It had creeped up into the 13 percentage area, which was a little concerning. So we act according to advice we're given, readings that we all look at, and just really what's happening in our greater community. I'm very happy. We did the booster clinic when we did because as you know, we had a little spin right around Mother's Day in the health center. But all of those residents had been boosted, so they fared very well. There was no hospitalizations, nobody passed away. So again, because of the vaccination program, it's really helping the outcomes be so much better. So my advisement is just, I sent a memo out Monday saying that I am recommending masking. We're not requiring it because we're not to the point where I would say, you know, you really, if you leave your apartment, wear a mask. But just, again, be wise. All the things that I've taught you over the last two and a half years, make your own decisions, what's best for you. If you're in a larger crowd, I actually wore a mask in today because I knew there'd be many people. If I just walk through the hall and see an occasional person, I may not mask. You've got to make those decisions. And if you need help making those decisions, that's where community nursing can help you. You don't have to make these decisions if you're not sure. So if you're in a larger group, I would wear a mask. I know you can't do that during dining services. So again, you know, if you kind of, I'm not saying you should eat with smaller groups again, but I wouldn't have large parties because we are seeing a little flare-up around Greater New Haven as well. So again, just use, I don't want to say common sense because there's no common sense in COVID, but just use the best practical knowledge that you have to help you make decisions. And again, Michelle Stocking is in the back of the room. She's really managing the COVID testing, et cetera, you know, for the independent community and she's doing a stellar job. You know, I'm just giving her a little help. She's really doing wonderfully. The thing I'm concerned about is exposure. I'm more concerned about exposure than I am the actual COVID because the numbers are so low. The problem is, once someone becomes positive, it's our job to look at, okay, who has that person touched in the last at least three days? Sometimes we go back a little further. And if we go back the past three days and we find out who you've been in touch with, it can make for large exposure groups. And that's maybe what you're feeling. There's a lot of people being tested right now. Let's just say you go to diner, the Center Stage, and you have dinner with eight residents. The next day, you have COVID. We're going to track back and the other seven people are now in that exposure group. So you might be seeing large numbers, but the numbers you're seeing are generally exposed people. I'm happy to say, just, I think it's everybody, Michelle, right? Everyone that's been in any exposure group has not turned positive, which means we're doing a great job. So I just want to like calm everybody a little bit. You know, I tend to be a calming person. I don't get excited easily. But I would, if there were things that were really heightened and I think we need to do this, as you know, during COVID, I actually sent out mandates saying you must, you have to do that. But again, right now, we're not at that point. You know, like I said, it's only four people, three people in total. And those three people will be off quarantine by Saturday. Two are coming off tomorrow, one's coming off Saturday. So the numbers are small, but just be mindful of how you're gathering, especially when you're in groups. As you know, these viruses are, as each one comes up, they're getting more and more contagious. So it's spreading quickly. And a lot of people honestly don't even know they have COVID. So, you know, I know, I mentioned, you know, in the health center, over Mother's Day weekend, there were two visitors that came in because we do a great job with contact tracing. We were able to identify two visitors that came in to see two different residents that caused those two residents to develop COVID. When we called those families, they said, oh yeah, I just was diagnosed yesterday with COVID. They had no idea they had COVID when they came to visit. So nobody's purposely coming in. The same with all of your families. Your families could come and visit you. They could have no symptoms. They had no idea that they'd been exposed and that COVID is going to develop in the next day or two. So again, just, you know, keep, all these holidays make me nervous. We had this little outbreak in the health center over Mother's Day. Memorial Day is a couple of days away. I'd like to cancel all holidays for the next 10 years because it does, you know, make things get a little bit more concerning. So know who's coming to visit you. Make sure that they are symptom-free. If they have any symptom, runny nose, cough, you know all the symptoms, just postpone the visit. It's much better to be safe than sorry. If you're going to larger parties, off-campus, you know, wear a mask. I'd still wear a mask if you're going to the store because you don't know who's in the line. You have to trust people to do the right thing and we all know where that can get us. So just be wise and we're going to do fine. If there's reason to panic, I will tell you there's reason to panic. Until then, don't panic because again, we're doing great. A person here and there is not going to be concerning. Like I said, one is too many. I agree. I'm not trying to minimize it, but at the same time, we need to put it in perspective.
I just want to say how much your memo was appreciated. We had gone, some of us were feeling we hadn't heard from you in a while. And whether the news is good, bad, or indifferent.
You want to know.
We want to know. And so it was very appreciated getting your memo and I hope a long time doesn't go.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I agree with you 100%. You know, over the weekend, I was stirring at home thinking, I got to get a memo out Monday because there was a couple of incidences at the end of the week. So sometimes you try to get it out as timely as possible. You know, I don't, if I send something out on a Sunday, I think all of you would have been, oh boy, this is really urgent. So Monday, I made sure the memo went out. But I assure you, if numbers start to creep up, again, in my perspective, you know, a couple here and there you needed to know, but it wasn't alarming. But I did get it out Monday, but I promise I'll be better about that. I definitely agree with you.
I'm wondering if it would be considered to test people when they come in? I mean, it appears as though most of these cases have been brought into Whitney Center by family or friends. And like the people who came in and didn't know, if you had tested them, would the test have been positive?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
It takes a couple of days.
But perhaps.
Perhaps. You're right. We might have caught it. So I can actually give you some data on that. The health department required health centers, our health center, skilled nursing homes. They did put a mandate out several months ago that said anyone that enters a, any type of skilled nursing setting as a visitor, they needed to either produce their vaccination card with boosters or if they didn't have it because they didn't get vaccinated or they forgot it at home, we had to test them at the door. They actually did away with that within six weeks because it caught just about nobody. So unfortunately, it takes time for COVID to brew in your system. Sometimes you even have symptoms before you test positive. So I don't know, again, it showed it did not work. So they did say you can stop testing. To test everyone, all of your visitors to come in, we could not manage that. First of all, the manpower. Michelle, actually, I talked to her this morning and she's like, we're doing so many test kits every day because of just the exposures. If we then included all your visitors, we would probably need a full-time person at the door to test all your visitors. So you could ask your visitors, can you get tested before you come? I just would feel safer. That's what I would do if you're concerned. If you're not sure, if your family members have lives that, you know, you know they're not kind of staying to themselves, if they're going off and going on trips, then that is something I would ask of them. But we couldn't manage it. Plus, you know, that's a lot of test kits.
So at this point, a mask is required to go into the health center or into the sixth floor?
Yes.
Well, yesterday, while I was up on the sixth floor waiting in the elevator, a worker went into the memory unit unmasked.
Okay. Michelle, you heard that? She will investigate. There's, you know, because the health center has very frail people and memory support, everything we do in the health center, we kind of mimic in memory support. We do have different requirements in those settings versus all of you that are independent or just having some assisted living in your apartment. In the health center, our staff not only wear, we can actually wear these masks in the health center. They have to wear what's called an N95 because they're providing care. I'm hoping, there's a protocol because we had that outbreak around Mother's Day. You have to go two full consecutive weeks testing every staff member, team member, and every resident. And they all have to be negative for you to stop being in the outbreak mode. So I'm happy to say Tuesday was our second week of testing and everyone was negative. So Michelle and I, Michelle Ackerman and I this morning spoke and what we decided to do, because I don't like holidays, we decided to wait till Tuesday, continuing to wear N95s just to make it through the holiday. And then we're going to reassess Tuesday. Because it takes a few days, I'm assuming more visitors will come in. So we're going to reassess probably Wednesday or Thursday, given a couple of days of the COVID virus that it takes to infiltrate another person's system. And we probably will do away with the N95s and just go back to these. I don't know if any of you have worn N95 masks. They're hard to work in. So I'm trying to be kind to the staff at the same time, keep all those residents in the health center safe.
I'd like to offer a personal experience that might be helpful.
Sure.
My wife is one of the three people who are infected. And I want to really tell everybody how well-prepared the staff and the institution is here. This is my personal fourth pandemic. I go all the way back to AIDS. And Dr. Ann acted on this immediately. She was, started the next day on a drug that's not usually the one. And I must say, the nursing staff, the, you know, all aspects of the staffs at Whitney Center have come in and the testing, everything has been, in my very critical view, very exemplary. And so I want to assure everybody that the system and the staff are not lost at here all. And these things you hear is a lot of work. I'm test-negative somehow. But I want to assure you, at least from our experience, that the institution is right at the cutting edge in dealing. She has a very light case. It's not very dangerous. And that's true of most of them, if everybody's been immunized.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Askanis. I appreciate those kind thoughts. I have the best nursing team in the world. I couldn't have handpicked better people. I'm very proud to lead them because they are so dedicated to all of you and it shows by these great outcomes.
It is my opinion that we need more teaching on how to wear the mask properly because it's my everyday experience to see people wearing them that they are actually, this whole area is not covered. They pull them down, they pull them up. And I've also noticed, unfortunately, some staff member who are, you know, by the dust somewhere and they have them, they're wearing them just over the face or. Could something more teaching be done?
Sure. There's never enough teaching. You know, we continuously teach. I'll give you all a quick lesson so you'll have the first lesson of how to wear a mask, just in case you don't know if you're not comfortable with it. So most of you wear surgical masks. That is what we recommend. We don't recommend cloth masks. In the beginning, they felt those nice little colorful designed masks worked and they found out they did not create enough of a barrier. So we do ask that you wear the surgical masks around the building. And what you do, I'll talk before I put it on because it might be a little harder to hear me. But if you feel both ends of the mask, one side is harder, that has an ear, an ear, yeah, I'll hook it over your, your nose. Steel, kind of a little guide there that that's where you put the nose. So that's where you're going to place it on the upper part of your nose. And then you hoop it around. Then you want to just make sure you pull it down so it covers all the way through your chin. Your nose should not be exposed and your mouth should not be exposed because those are the two entrances that are mainly caused, where the virus loves to get in and actually cause the COVID virus to brew inside you. So you put the, I tend to put the nose piece on first. You hook it around your ears. I make sure I squeeze the nose piece so that it doesn't fall down like this, which I know is, some people, it's all about the. it doesn't fall down like this, which I know is, some people, it's all about the shape of your nose. So you want to hook it on, and then you just want to give a little tug, so you know it's under your, your mouth. And this is the proper way. If you have a smaller face, you can actually take the ear loops, twist them, like so, and put them over your ear, and it gives you a better seal on the side. I don't have a small face, so I don't twist mine, but you want to customize it to your face. So again, some people have very slender faces, do that little twist, and you'll find a nice seal on the side. Any questions on how to wear a mask?
How frequently should they be changed?
So that's a great question. As a nurse, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Sean, you didn't hear that question. So Mrs. Jones asked if, like, is there a frequency that you should be changing these masks? You should change them at least once a week, or when they're soiled. So if you find, you know, the front of your mask, the other thing is, you don't want to touch the front of your mask often, because if you are exposed to COVID, any of that, any of that collection, because let's be honest, I know this doesn't sound great, but you're going to get it from somebody's sputum when someone speaks to you or, or coughs. It's going to land on this face mask, so you don't really want to touch this much, because then it's on your hand, and then you have to wash your hands. So you want to hold it by the tips. So if you see any kind of debris, any type of soiling on this mask, throw it out. These are really inexpensive. We, we do have them, we sell them in the gift shop. If you're in any kind of a situation where you can't get your hands on any, you just reach out to community nursing, and we will assist you. So again, we are not requiring them, but we are recommending, especially in larger groups. If I walk down the hall, you may not see me with one, because it's, I'd have very minimal contact. Because again, just to review, I know you've been hearing this a long time, but the, how the virus goes from one body to the other is within six feet of distancing. It's unmasked, and it's more than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. They used to say, the CDC, when it first came out, when we were all learning about COVID, it said 15 minutes at a time. They have changed that to 15 minutes within a 24-hour period. So if you have a visitor that comes in, they might spend half hour with you, and then they leave, and they come back, you know, anything more than 15 minutes and 24 hours.
Just to remember, most, many of us are wearing hearing aids, and you have to be very conscious of that, because hearing aids litter the floor probably all over the country. Nobody's talked about designing masks for the elderly with hearing aids.
So I will tell you, my husband wears a cochlear implant in one ear. In the other ear, he wears a hearing aid. So I understand it's a challenge, because I'm always saying, you know, your, your ear is out, or whatever, because it's hard to manage. But there are, there are masks that you can get that clip on to the back, and they, there's like a little bar you have, yeah, that's, that's perfect. Mr. Seaman has one. So there is apparatuses out there that clip behind the back of your head versus going over your ears. And that's really helpful. Mrs. Menon, many, probably two years ago, we were talking about wearing masks for the people that are wearing hearing aids, and she told me about this plastic bar that she was able to find, and it just, it, these hooks hook on to the plastic bar that's on the back of your head, and the, the bar secures it in place, so you don't even need to go near your ears. So there are things out there.
Peggy, are there anything you can do?
I know. I know. That's a hard one. So the question was, is there anything out there that helps you from having your eyeglasses steam up when you're wearing masks? So I, I will tell you from experience, I wear contacts, and I'm so grateful, because my contacts don't steam up, but I do occasionally wear eyeglasses, and it is awful. What I've found is the trick is if you put this on your nose, kind of higher up, and your glasses go over the mask, it helps with the steaming. It's a little trick I figured out. May not work for everybody, but it, it helped me. Lynn?
Peggy, this is a totally different topic in a way. I was wondering if you could tell us the number of residents who have tested positive for COVID since the beginning of time? I mean.
Oh, yeah. Actually, it's a small number, I can tell you that. But I don't have, the health center had their issues like in early 2021, and we went pretty COVID-free until Mother's Day weekend. I don't have the exact number with me, but it's not huge numbers. I mean, you know, everything considered. If you'd like me to bring that next meeting, I'd be happy to share that, if it's, it's of value. To me, it's not of value at this point, because we, we kind of look at it in rolling seven days, so we kind of look at the segment as it happens. Once people are over it, they're over it.
I guess I was just a little surprised at how many people I know have had it.
Yep.
You know, some recovering, some just getting it.
It's, it's very active out in the greater community. It's very active in Whitney Center more than ever. This is definitely the most contagious this virus has ever been, and that's why I'm asking you, when you're with a lot of people, to wear masks and to minimize your exposures. Anything else with COVID? Just another quick thing, because I do want to move off the COVID conversation, but the other way we're seeing COVID come in is for those of you that are traveling, we did ask, because we found several people that came back from travels, that they came back within a day or two positive, because you, again, you can pick it up anywhere, airport, train, plane, you know, bus. We're asking when you travel to let the community health nurses know. You could call their office at 2597, let them know you're planning a trip, and that, you know, when you come back, you call them, and they will test you upon your return, and then at day three and day five. And generally, after day five, you're kind of out of the woods, although we did have one person that tested much later than that. But that's very rare. So again, we ask you, and that way there, we can minimize, and during that period you're testing, we ask you to minimize your exposure to others, like in dining venues in particular. Any questions on any of that? The only other thing I have for today is, we did hire Janice Howard as our new audiologist. Now, I will tell you, people think the services we used to have was an audiologist, but we used to have a hearing aid specialist who were tremendous. It was Pat that was here for years, and she had a partner before her, and they gave us great dedicated service, but their focus was truly on hearing aids. We were very fortunate to actually attain the services of Janice Howard, who is actually an audiologist. She is here every other Tuesday. I do believe Janet, it's in the, the WC My Life information, but she's here every other Tuesday. This coming Tuesday, May, May 31st, is her Tuesday, so you can figure every two weeks. You do have to call her office and make an appointment. She's in the Wellness Center, and she does soup to nuts, because she's an audiologist. She can do hearing tests, she can recommend different devices for you if you have hearing issues. My husband uses her. She's wonderful. She has great patients, and she takes most insurances, so you can look at that as well. So if you haven't met her, and you have a need to talk to her about any of your hearing concerns, you know, do please, please reach out to, to her. The other thing is, on June 6th, she is giving a presentation to all of you that are interested here in the Cultural Arts Center from 3:00 to 4:30, and she's going to talk about kind of new devices that are out there, kind of new modern technology. So if you have an interest in upgrading, or just want to learn more, because your hearing's not quite as sharp as it used to be, please feel free to come to that presentation, and I'm sure it'll be in the program to remind you all to come June 6th. Anything else for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. I think you set close to a record for being up here. I, I do recall about a year ago, after we got our first booster shot, we sort of declared, ah, we're done with COVID. You know, Peggy, ah, you, you got us through it. A year later, we're still talking about it. But much, it's much, much better way with all of us being fully boosted and everything. So thank you, Peggy, for, in your team, for all your efforts. So my name's Ken Sandberg. I'm the Vice President of our Lifestyle Services. And for those of you who are relatively new, our Lifestyle Services consists of Resident Services, Dining, and Facilities. And in a moment, I'll call the leaders of those departments up here, but I first just want to address one item, that Emily left us the beginning of the month, and I know you all got a letter. She was our Director of Facilities. So Facilities is made up of a Maintenance Department and a Housekeeping Department. And so when Emily left and gave notice that she was leaving, myself and the team are taking a little pause to evaluate the Facilities Department. We have Dan, who's been running our Maintenance Department for quite a while, and does a great job. Barbara, who's relatively new, but is a really experienced housekeeping supervisor, has been running our housekeeping. So I'm working very closely with them right now to evaluate that role. So just so you know, it's not, it's not posted right now, and we are evaluating that. I am working very closely with Dan and Barbara on their positions and their roles within their department. So going forward, if you have any questions regarding Maintenance, please reach out to Dan, I know you do. If you have any questions regarding Housekeeping, please reach out to Barbara, and certainly, they both report into me, and I'm always, always available to you as well. So I just wanted to make sure we spoke about that. So now, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to call, Maria Frey will come up and give a Resident Services report, followed by Thomas, who will give a Dining Report, and I'm going to ask Dan to come up and give a Maintenance Report, and then I will follow up at the very end and take any questions.
Hello, everyone. It's good to see you. And a special warm welcome to our newest residents. Just as a reminder, and for those new residents, Resident Services provides the following services: reception, transportation, security, and the spa on Main Street. Besides these front house services, behind the scenes, Resident Services is the campus communication hub, the scheduler of staff, resident and resident committee events, as well as the creator of special programming, including off-site trips. Today, I have a very brief and concise overview on transportation and the upcoming trip schedules. The next resident trip, as well as the Thrive at Home members, is for ticket holders attending this Saturday's May 28th New Haven Ballet's performance of Don Quixote at 1:00 PM. The Whitney Center bus will travel from the North Building at 12:20 and leave from the South Building at 12:22. I will make the trip to the theater with those residents and Thrive members who are attending, and your tickets will be picked up at the box office. I attended last week's performance of An American in Paris. It was absolutely wonderful, and I can assure you that anyone who did attend and came back to Whitney Center, they were dancing in the aisles, and I'm not kidding, they were. It was wonderful. Sunday, June 4th, the following Saturday from next week, or will be from this week, will be the final performance of the Met Live Opera at Cinemark in North Haven. As always, the WC bus will leave at 12:15 from the North and 12:17 from the South. June is a very busy month for cultural excursions with guided tours for residents and Thrive at Home members. Friday, June 17th, there will be a trip to the Florence Griswold Museum. June 22nd, there will be a trip to the New Britain Museum, and June 29th is the now-confirmed date for a visit and a guided tour of the Halsted Museum. So we're looking very forward to that as well. Staff members will be joining the residents and Thrive members on the trip, too, so they also are looking forward to it. Detailed information will be sent to those residents who have registered. Note that admission fees and the appropriate transportation fees will be billed to your Whitney Center account, and if you have any questions regarding that, please be sure to ask me. I also would like to take a time, since we're talking about trips and all of these cultural excursions, I'd like to take a moment to thank the transportation team for their wonderful work. With Gil Galan leading the charge of his driving team of Marvin, Yvonne, Tashima, and Alex, and Rashawn, it is a winning team. I have seen firsthand the care and concern the drivers show of each of their rides. This small but mighty fleet takes pride in you and getting you to, in its job to getting you to its destinations in a timely and safe manner, with a smile for every mile. So please, I know we all in our hearts appreciate what they do for you, and for us as well in many ways, and being the best, being at their best, and giving you their best is, is the key of their, of their mission, and they are truly so happy to be a part of your lives in this very special way. So thank you to them, and thank you to you.
Does anyone have any questions regarding transportation, or any of the services that we offer at Resident, through Resident Services? No? All right, great. Thank you. I'm not sure who's next. It is Thomas.
Good morning, everyone. Okay. I stood at the back today with an intention of doing a Soul Train-style dance down the aisle, but time is against us, so I'll save that for another day. As Maria, you're glad, as Maria spoke about love, and as we love, and we all need love, I, I thought about it, the, both the giving and the taking of that love requires a full stomach. So let's spend a little time and talk about some food, right? First thing is the bistro. I want to just talk about that. As you know, over the past couple of weeks, we had to pull back our services a little in regards to that evening special we had. As of this week and into next, we are resuming that service. What we are doing, we're starting off with five days, and then there will be two days that we'll have a chef's special. So in the menus that you see coming out, you will see a specific entree for five days of the week. There'll be two days where it's a chef's special. So ultimately, you do have a special going on every night, but two of them will be at the discretion and expertise of a chef on, on duty. So I'm happy to say that we're, we're slowly getting back that service in place. Staying in the bistro, some of you may have noticed a empty ice cream machine, freezer sitting over onto the side. We're hoping to have that filled by next week, where we have signed a contract with Hershey's, and we will be introducing Hershey products in that freezer and behind the scenes for center stage ice cream and so on. But you're going to see a variety of ice cream products, including sugar-free, for those who would like to get that at their convenience in the bistro. So hopefully by next week, we should have the stock in. It's going to look pretty, and it's going to be exciting. So please stop by as you feel a little warm, and grab yourself a cone and a, whatever you are inclined to eat. Staying in the bistro, on Memorial Day, we will be having our barbecue buffet. If you haven't seen a menu yet, it'll be out today or tomorrow, but it'll be our normal lunchtime hours, 11:30 to 1:30. I think there's some other activities going on that day. Is Mr. Hutton here? Right, sir? So we certainly want to encourage you to enjoy the buffet, but then go on and enjoy the, the ceremony and so on. The corner store will be open on Memorial Day, normal hours, 8 to 3, so don't, please don't have any fear of not getting your normally, your normal groceries or sundries on that day. What have I spoke about recently? We've spoken about the coffee service in the pub. We've gotten our machine, and we should be getting that set up over the next week or so. So for those patrons who enjoy sitting in the pub after having dinner, there'll be, be coffee and tea available there for you to enjoy. So hopefully you, a lot of people have mentioned this and said, you know, we'd love to sit there a little longer and have a coffee and a tea. So we're going to make that available. I did not have anything else for you today. Were there any questions you had for me today? Yes, sir, Mr. Boris. No, they'll get, they'll get a mic to you, sir. They'll get a mic to you.
Okay, thank you. Thomas, four years ago, when I started living here, the pub was open seven days a week.
Yes, sir.
And it had a printed menu, which changed from time to time. When the COVID arrived, naturally, that had to be cut back, and it was cut back quite a bit. And now we have it closed one or two days a week. We have what amounts to a no-choice buffet, as opposed to a as opposed to the printed menu where there were 10 or 12 choices. Are there any plans, present or long-term, to restore the pub as the advertising material said four years ago, to daily service with a printed menu with choices?
I can answer this way. No. But with explanation. The service we had previously in the pub was not sustainable. We had a service where we were serving food in the pub that came from the bistro. Now, based on the service in the bistro, it was not a sustainable service that kept people satisfied with the meal they received, in the time they received it, and in the way they wanted it received. Now, we did that for a lot of times and it was a constant source of complaints. Something had to be done. Now, COVID gave us the opportunity to take a step back and say, okay, is this the opportunity to assess that service? Do we look at what that service is? Now, to answer your question from a certain part, it is my intention that for seven days a week, you will be able to have a meal there. That is certainly the intention for the future. What I cannot say is that it would be the same service as was before. But we definitely want to make sure that you are able to have a meal in the pub every day that it is open. Now, we're open six days a week right now. We're also looking at opening seven days a week eventually. I would love to have that happen. But as we've talked and as every other person has talked, we are under some constraints where the availability of the right staff is concerned. Now, as we go through those processes, little by little, time by time, we will try to restore what is necessary. What is not, we have to look at, okay, was that a necessary change? Let us move forward, not necessarily going back to something that wasn't sustainable. So I appreciate your concerns and I know you enjoy the pub. And I want to make sure the pub is a place that you can go to when you want to and have a meal. And I'm happy to speak some more about it with you. But I definitely will do my best to give you the best service that's available for the pub. Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there any other question?
I think having buffet in the pub is brilliant. What my problem is, I go to the pub on Fridays and Fried Fish Friday. I pick up dinner in the bistro and carry it over to the pub and eat it there. I guess what I would like is, yes, absolutely buffet all the time in the pub. But switch it around, you know? Not always the same day, the same style food. Like, I love pasta, but I'm never there on Thursday. So, you know.
Okay. I would invite you to pop by on Thursday. Because the Thursday goers could tell you pasta night is a fantastic night and it's really enjoyed. I take your point on that and I want to share this with you. We, as you know, we rotate Friday nights with Fry Fridays and Chinese night, right? It's rotated. We have to develop a number of things. There's a number of menus that we have to bring forth. But everything is affected by constraints. We're under, how much can we put forward? I also have to think of my team. How much do I push and how much do I ask for? So I take that recommendation. We're going to talk about it as a team. We're going to look at, okay, maybe it is time to make a little switch for that Friday and start to introduce a different style here and there and start to, and hopefully I'll satisfy that need you may have. I will look in there. I'll definitely look at that Fry Friday. I've heard a few things, so it is on my radar, all right?
Thomas, have you been there on Sunday nights? It's packed.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of us were talking about, is there some way of making it more convenient to also use the living room to sit and have your dinner there? So I don't know if you could place the food in a spot where it used to be or something. But we wondered if you would think about how on those packed nights.
For seating?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, most definitely.
How you might expand it.
Most definitely.
How you can do it, but I know you can figure it out.
I've been looking, I've actually been looking at the numbers and I recognize that. In the beginning, when we had a slightly busier night, I have a table there which has now become a fixture, right? It was an overflow table. And what I'm recognizing now is we need to put a few more. It may be temporary that we have, I don't want to compromise the feeling and the sense of the living room. So I don't want anything permanent. So what we look at is on Sundays especially, we can introduce some temporary tables that serve that purpose on that night. I'll have that done this Sunday. Okay, all right. Any more questions? Should I run away at this point? No. It was a pleasure as always. I do want to thank you. I want to thank you for your, not just the patience and understanding that I always ask for, but particularly for your encouragement. We've heard a lot of words of encouragement as people understand what we're dealing with. And I want to know myself and the dining team really appreciate you. And we take pleasure in serving you every day. So, thank you. Enjoy.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dan Zulo. For you who don't know me, I'm the maintenance supervisor here at Whitney Center. I just wanted to go over a few things that we're involved in right now. I'm sure most of you are aware, we've been in all of your apartments by now changing out your filters for air conditioning season. We have completed all of the apartment filters. We still have to do the major equipment on the roof, which I don't really like to do until all the pollen is kind of down because it's pretty counterproductive. So we're doing that in the next couple of weeks. We've been doing a lot of preventative maintenance on all the air conditioning equipment, you know, get us ready for the summer, make sure that everything's in top shape. I'm happy to report everything's working properly. Everything's working the way that it should. And I don't really have any concerns, you know, going into the summer. The, we also have had a federal healthcare inspection a couple of weeks ago that I want to report that, you know, was very positive. We had very minor deficiencies, which we have already made most of the repairs on. Some doors latching a certain way, very minor things. So, you know, the building is very much in top shape. What I'd like to do is ask for your help going into air conditioning season. A lot of people have their windows open while your air conditioners are on. If you can just try to remind yourselves to shut those windows. And in the North Building in particular, your vents need to stay open. People cover them, you put books on top of them, or shut them when you get cold instead of turning the thermostat off. What that does is basically the unit keeps running and running and has nowhere to exhaust the air. So they break. And then, you know, we need to disturb you in your environment, in your apartment to, you know, fix everything for you. So if you could just help us out with those two things, that would be great. You know, I know the team would really appreciate that. The, all of the new equipment, obviously, you see memos all the time, domestic hot water, electrical infrastructure, all these new things that we're doing, all this, you know, new equipment that we're bringing into Whitney Center. I just kind of want to give you a little insight that this stuff really excites us. First of all, anyway, I mean, you know, some people like getting new puppies and stuff. New equipment for us is big time. You know, especially in the North Building in particular because that infrastructure was, you know, getting pretty old. And we're really going to see a lot of that come to fruition this summer. A lot of that equipment down there in the boiler room is much more, you know, automatic type of equipment that we are not going to have to spend so much time on. I'm sure a lot of you have not had as many hot water issues in your apartment, not had as many whole building, air conditioning, heating issues. This past winter, we did really well with, you know, whole building issues. So I just want you all to be aware that these things are working well. We're very happy that these things are, have come into the building and, you know, I think this will be really good for us moving into the future. That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions? A lot, a lot of questions.
Who you ready?
Sure.
Okay. Elevators.
Yep.
Where on the radar? Where in the plan? Is it to upgrade or replace the elevator infrastructure?
So we have done some upgrades to the elevator infrastructure, specifically in the North Building. The one elevator that I'm sure you're all specifically asking about, the one that's been down for a little while, we're waiting on a part. It's a supply chain issue, like many other, you know, places around the country right now. We have been in contacts with two different elevator companies about getting that repaired, basically trying to find who can get us the part faster. And we're just struggling to get that part in particular.
Dan?
Yes.
It's been obvious that the generators have been changed. Could you tell us about what was going on?
Absolutely. So the North Building generator has been replaced. Today, Department of Public Health is here. There's a lot of action outside where we are commissioning the generator, which basically just means all the right people are there to kind of see it run, make sure that it's all connected properly and that we're ready to go and get rid of our temporary generator. So this only affects the North Building. The South Building and the South Building generator has had no changes to it. So it'll be the Health Center specifically and the North Building that'll be affected by this new generator is a larger generator, which is specifically why we made this change so that we could, you know, have a higher capacity for it. And there's been, you know, it's been very smooth, everything that's, all the different processes. I know a lot of people have been concerned about noise and different things like that. That is coming to an end. You know, we are pretty close to having that all finished.
Yeah. Dan?
I have a question about the replacement of the filters. Mine was replaced recently, about a month ago, and it was extremely dirty. The person replacing it says, boy, this is a filthy filter. It's just so bad. And, you know, it was dripping with dust, I guess. And I tend to have be allergic to dust. And I would like mine replaced more often than once a year. Is that possible?
Okay, yeah, I can talk to you after about that. Sure, we come up with a plan. I mean, a lot of apartments are going to have dirty filters more than others. Depending on the kind of flooring you have, you know, how often you vacuum, that kind of creates dust, those different things. So, you know, we can certainly discuss that.
And secondly, due to my location, which is very close to the, where they have services, the electrical and then another entry for other situation, I experienced a lot of noise, noises in my apartment. And I wondered if you could, during the working hours especially, naturally, have a, something that could block that sound from my room because I hear loud voices and I hear all kinds of noises because I'm 111. Is there something? I think the sound comes through the gap in the door.
I'll come and speak with you after this is over and let's talk about exactly what you're hearing.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Dan, in the laundry room on the second floor, where the dryer has been out for three months because of parts.
Right.
You said the parts had come in.
Yes.
But it hasn't been fixed and that was 10 days ago.
So we got an influx of parts, all pretty much on the same day, for four or five different appliance issues that we've been kind of waiting on. All of those other appliance issues were in people's apartments. So we prioritized that first. Those have been completed yesterday, actually, was the last day that we finished all of those. So realistically, by the end of the week, that that second floor should be taken care of.
Yay.
I'd like to secondly comment about changing the filters more often. For those of us with seasonal allergies, once a year is really quite inadequate. And our filter when it was changed was clearly filthy. So, you know, probably the change of seasons for air conditioning and that the heating would be more appropriate.
Mm-hmm. We could certainly discuss that. I know that's been, you know, brought up before. It's been on the table before, things like that. Also, COVID, like everything else, also affected some of that where we couldn't get filters, believe it or not.
Well, I'll get a screwdriver, take the frame off and put a new filter in.
We couldn't get filters in. It took me four months to get filters last year from when I put it in order. That's changed now, so we can certainly bring those things back to the table. Good? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Boy, I'm glad you were here because I couldn't have answered half those questions. So thank you, Dan. Just a couple, I know we're way behind schedule, just a couple of quick housekeeping items. So Emily, Barbara will be putting together a schedule in the next couple of weeks about interior window washing, so expect that in the next couple of weeks. And also Monday, even though it's Memorial Day, we will have IL housekeepers here for your regular housekeeping service. So Barbara, I want me to pass that along to you. And that's all I have for the team and I have for the lifestyle. Is any questions that you have at this time?
I just wondered, you said indoor window cleaning.
Yeah.
If you have a sliding glass door on a patio, can the outside of that be done at that time as well?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that if it's easy for that person to do it. We can certainly take a look at that, absolutely. I'll pass that along. Okay, very good. Sean, come on up.
All right, I have three minutes. Unless, Jeff, you're talking, are you talking? Oh, okay, then I have two minutes and 50 seconds. All right. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sean O'Connor. I'm the, I work in the marketing and sales department with Dawn and Colleen, who I'm sure all of you know one or both. To date, there are currently 21 apartments available for reservation. So for those of you keeping score, we were at 23 last time I did this report. So we're down to 21. 57% are one-bedroom and studio, 43% are two-bedroom, and we have 15 in the North and six in the South. Releases continue to remain higher this year. Don't know what's going on, but they remain higher. There are currently six apartments that are reserved and five of the six apartments are approved for move-in. So we have one that is going through the process as we speak. We have three new residents move in since our last town hall. We're anticipating another three residents in May. So that'll be six total residents in the month of May. And then we only have one resident who's scheduled to move in the month of June. The team has taken one new reservation since our last town hall and our average occupancy continues to be right around 87, 88%. To date, we have moved 11 residents in. Four have moved into the North Building and then we have another seven that have moved into the South Building. We continue to advertise, we continue to do digital stuff, website stuff, all that fun stuff. Thrive at Home, we added one new member for Thrive at Home, so that takes us up to about 76 people in that program. And we have another four applications that are in process for Thrive at Home. And then, of course, the Health Center continues to be at about around 32 beds and that's because of staffing, but we continue to be at 32 beds. And the team continues to work on both new and existing leads. That's my report. So any questions that people have? I have two. Thank you. I left too much time for Jeff. All right, I'll turn it over to Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I'm Jeff Devaney, Vice President of Finance. I've been given about 25 seconds, so. We finished our 2021 audit, which we had a very clean audit. I don't think you'll see any changes now until the other system goes in until, in October 1. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you to the entire team and I just want to very quickly just wrap up by saying how proud I am of this team. And as you can see, you know, this was Dan's first time at a town meeting, you know, answering questions. He did a fabulous job, right? And, and one of the, one of the, the keys to our continued growth and development of all of our team members is for those of us who typically are in the mode of taking control over things, like me, to step back and to empower our team members to step forward and take charge and do things themselves and I didn't have to jump up here at all, so it was pretty cool. So I'm really proud of the team, so thank you all, you did a great job. One last announcement, Monday, right here in the CAC at 10, beginning at 10:30, right, Mr. Hutton? Yep, Mr. Hutton has once again done a wonderful job of organizing our Memorial Day celebration and services and so please do join us. Mr. Hutton, did you want to say anything about that?
No, just that all, mostly, I mean, if the veterans are, to show up, that'd be great.
Okay, you heard him. Okay, that's great, that's it. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your day, have a good weekend.